All right, good evening, everybody. It looks like we are back. Thank you for allowing us that brief pause to try to get some technical issues fixed. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda, item number eight. The consent agenda items presented for approval can be viewed on the district website. And board members, are there any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration this evening?
Chair Ostaffi, I would like to remove letter F from the consent agenda for consideration.
Okay, it's agenda item F.
You must be the Jones.
Thank you, Jackie. And I will also be pulling off item number I for separate consideration. So that is F and I. Board members, are there any other ones you would like for separate consideration? No, okay. With that, let's see. I and F are requested removal of consent agenda prior to board action on the consent So is there a motion to approve? I'm sorry. So we're going to pull those two off and start with I. So with that, is there a motion to approve item F, which was pulled from the consent
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Yeah.
I believe we normally go ahead and approve the consent agenda that, and then, pardon me if I'm interrupting, I just want a clarification on point of order.
Yeah, I'm looking at the notes here, and I think something's missing. So you're absolutely right. So is there, I guess we can do a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified without items I and F. So I see our lawyer nodding his head. So with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removals of items I and F for separate consideration?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second by Jackie Moscata-Jones.
There's a second. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda with the removals of items I and F for separate consideration, Sherri will make a roll call vote.
Director Dawson-Walton? Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Moscata-Jones? Director Ostaffi?
Aye.
Six to zero on the consent agenda without item F and I.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve item F, which was removed from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve item F, which was removed from the consent agenda?
This is Director Craig, and I will move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second to approve item F, which was pulled from the consent agenda for separate I will second that item. Is there any discussion on item F?
This is Director Jackie Moscata-Jones, and since I asked to pull it, I can start a discussion. I'm not, I'm not wholeheartedly against this. It's the contracts with the city of Maple Grove and Brooklyn Park for school resource officers in our buildings. And I just wanted to make sure that the community is aware of changes we made in the contract in order to, in an attempt to make sure that students feel safe. And in light of what's happening in the city of Minneapolis right now, and the fact that a large population of our district may not feel safe around people who are deemed to be peace officers, I want to make sure that we honor that feeling and to make sure that when we are working to build relationships with students, with our SROs and our community, that we really work hard to make sure that that's happening. I think some of the provisions in this agreement that were added since the last time we had a contract with an SRO, including training for peace officers with trauma-informed training and de-escalation training, those sorts of trainings is a great step. My understanding from the principals is that our current SROs have great relationships with our students, which makes me happy. And the other thing that I would like to provide for consideration by the district is when we're doing assessments of our SROs, that we include students and families in on that assessment piece, just so that we're keeping all of us accountable and we're all keeping the emotional, physical, and mental safety of our students.
Thank you, Director Moscata-Jones. Any other questions or comments, discussion on this item?
I do. This is Director Dawson-Walton. I too, what I would like to see, considering that there are some changes made, I would like, since we have a little time, to have an opportunity to get a better understanding of the changes that are made, of if there has been any stakeholder feedback, whether that's from principals or staff, with the cities themselves. So some type of a work session, update report on the SROs in our schools.
Thank you, Director Dawson-Walton. Director Douglas, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to touch base about this issue as well. I know that in the past, we've had discussions about also including the Osseo Police Department. And I know at this time that it would not be, it wouldn't be feasible to pursue having police officers or, I'm sorry, school resource officers from the city of Osseo at Osseo Senior High School right now. And so I do support this particular contract. I also think that we should move forward with it. I think we've made some really great strides. In the past, we didn't really have a particular agreed-upon contract. It was more of an informal contract. And so I really appreciate that we have a contract that really outlines and specifies that the school resource officers will be attending training from the National Association of School Resource Officers or the Minnesota School Safety Center, and that training may include both PBIS and trauma-informed practices, which are things that we use in our schools right now, and just further building upon the relationships that our school resource officers already have with our students and providing a safe and welcoming environment for all students. I think we should move forward with this at this meeting, but I also agree with what Director Dawson-Walton had said, that I think that we should kind of have some sort of work session where we're taking assessment of where we stand today, so that when we have our joint program assessment each year, we can know where we came from and where we started at. And that's basically where I stand on that issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Douglas. Director Simons, do you have any comments or questions?
I have a question. So while the items for training are outlined in this contract, I want to clarify whether these were items that were already being practiced and we're just putting them in the contract, or if these are new items altogether.
Yeah, Director Simons, this is Ron Meyer. I will respond to that. So I would say that several of these new items that are in the contract that we haven't seen in previous contract language with the cities have been a part of kind of the regular practice of some of our partners, but not necessarily both partners in a consistent way. So really what our goal was through this process and working with both of our cities is to make sure that we have consistent expectations for both the district as well as each of our city partners in what the SRO program should look like. And so part of putting into language, some of the training and some of the other expectations in terms of relationship building and some of those pieces already being practiced, but this kind of puts it into a very formal piece and making sure that we have those expectations. And then also an evaluation and assessment process at the end of the year as a tool for continuous improvement with this relationship. So I would say that certainly elements have been a part of past practice, but not necessarily in a consistent way, which we believe that this language will help us with that consistency moving forward.
Okay. I am supportive of moving this forward tonight, but I also agree with the previous comments. I think having a baseline of where we're at today, this board is, and I observe that others are very interested in ensuring we've got good results, we've got good clarity as to what the objective is. So I think ensuring that we understand where we're at today and how we make progress against that is important.
And, you know, this is Director Dawson-Walton. I guess what I would say is we don't have to make a decision right now. It doesn't end until June. The contract doesn't need to be renewed until June 30th. And I'm not saying I'm in disagreement with the contract, but I don't feel fully comfortable without more of a discussion and an opportunity to ask some more questions. You know, building relationships is a two-way street. So I would want to know these recommendations or these practices around the types of training, meetings attended, you know, highlights, overview of the police departments, their school resource officer unit. You know, I'd really like to have a full discussion around that because, you know, there's also the parent and student component. And so while we may think that, and I could be wrong, and maybe we've done this already, but that's kind of what I'd want to know. While me, we may think this is how you build a relationship with our students, I think it's shown time and time again, just by the mere fact of even though they are school resource officers, and I know there's a model for that that's been successful, but then there's also been, you know, there's been some negatives to that too sometimes. And I just think that we need to take the time, and since we have another, an extra, I believe we do have an extra meeting in between to take the time to just fully hear out what this, what the program is, why the recommendations are the way they are, and then how we're going to educate and talk to our parents about this too. Because if, you know, I think if our parents aren't fully on board and understanding why these SROs are in our school, it's just a good opportunity as we renew this contract to kind of revisit that. So I would really like to make the request to see if we could have a work session and bring this back to June, our June meeting.
Thank you, Director Dawson-Walton. Director Craig, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Thank you. A year ago, we pushed out having a three-year contract. It was the direction to do two things. One, look at more what needs to be in this contract and the type of things that we want to put in writing and to have a solid foundation so that we can hold everybody accountable. And number two was also to give the time to bring Osseo into the discussion, because they really had not been. And I believe, Super McIntyre, you've worked tremendously along with Ron, with the city, with their elected officials, with their administrator, police chief, over the last year, and I thank you for doing that. They're not currently participating, but from the discussions I've had with people, it sounds like, you know, they've been heard, and we've built a much better relationship than what we had a year ago. So I thank you for doing that. And I do know that certain things were addressed in the discussions on what we put in into the contract, so I know things along that line have occurred. So those are my comments. Thanks, everyone, for the work on putting this together. With that, if there's no other comments, we'll put this up for a vote. And Sherri, if you can, please do a roll call for accepting item F.
I'm sorry. So there's no opportunity then? So how do I, what's the, what do I do to make a motion to progress this, so we can actually have a conversation in a work session, a deeper dive into this?
I might chime in. The only potential option would be a motion to table the item. That would require a motion, a second, and a full vote of the board. That would be preliminary to then the question of the contract, then voting on the contract.
Tim, is it true there's a motion on the table with a second? So how does the board handle that previous motion?
Yeah, so the motion, the, this, it's kind of in the nature of a motion, not a motion to amend, but it's treated in a very similar manner. You need to address that as primary to then the question on the, that's now on before the board. So the motion to table would need to be considered, and then the motion to, we would go back or return to the original motion.
So this, by way of clarifying, our June 9th and June 16th agendas, we would bump or move something off of one of those agendas if that was the will of the board to create space for this topic, and we can easily do that. We've talked about even adding sessions too, so that's an option. Or if the board chooses to vote tonight, that's, the board needs to determine.
To clarify, we can put an item on our work session at any time. We don't need to vote to put something on the work session, but right now we're talking about tabling it.
That's correct.
So I would put forth a motion to table this and revisit it at our next board meeting with the work session.
We have a motion to table this item. Is there a second?
Jackie Moscata-Jones, I will second that for consideration.
Okay. Is there any discussion on tabling it?
Director Ostaffi, this is Director Douglas. I see the value in having a conversation about it at a work session, but I also think it's really important that we honor the contract that we've worked so hard to develop. I know that Superintendent McIntyre and the administration of our school districts, our principals, have really great relationships with our school resource officers, and they believe that our students and families do as well. And I think that in the interest of maintaining those relationships, that we've worked really hard to grow over the last year especially, that we continue to move this forward tonight, but also have a work session about where we stand and what we want to see as we move forward. I agree that a lot of work has been done over the last year to put this contract forth and add the things in that were not in it and develop consistency. And so I just really feel like we should vote on this tonight and utilize the work sessions that we have coming forward towards other major topics that we have coming up as well.
Thank you, Director Douglas. Is there any other comments on the motion to table? With that, Sherri, if you could do a roll call to approve the motion to table this until...
Hold on, is somebody trying to talk?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, it's not that, I want to reiterate, I'm not saying I'm not supportive of it. I just wanted a chance to have a discussion and a presentation on it and a work session where we can dive a little bit deeper, and that would allow us time to still honor the contract and vote in our June meeting. So all it is, is tabling this until we have more discussion on it. So that's what, and again, it wasn't because I'm not supportive of it or don't support SROs or are not considering the relationship that Superintendent McIntyre has built with the cities and our principals and, but I think it's a very critical, the SRO program is very critical in many ways to our schools, especially as we address racial equity in our district and what that means, and looking to make sure we have a racial equity lens on this, the SRO program, I mean, that's what I'm talking about. And I don't see a reason why we wouldn't, if we have the time, I can understand if we were under like a crunch, but we have the time to do this. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Sherri, the vote is to table this vote on the contracts with our SRO officers on item F and table it to the next board meeting. And in the meantime, well, we can't guarantee that we can find time acceptable to everybody for another, for another work session, but that would be the issue. But so do, so voting yes would be to table this motion for a month, and voting nay would be to move on to voting on this tonight. So Sherri?
Director Moscata-Jones?
I don't see the harm in tabling it, so aye.
Director Dawson-Walton?
Aye.
Director Craig? Director Douglas? Director Ostaffi?
Nay.
Director Simons? Motion fails, two to four.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the original motion, which was made and seconded, which is to approve the contracts this evening. All in favor, Sherri, if you can continue with doing a roll call vote with those.
Director Ostaffi? Director Moscata-Jones?
Aye, and I want to make one more comment. I want to make sure that we are involving community when we're building relationships.
Director Douglas? Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Dawson-Walton? Director Simons?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to one.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, or on the consent agenda was item I. And item I is the Affinity Solutions proposal. And with that, I would like to make, is there a motion to approve Affinity Solutions Proposal Item I from the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
This is Director Craig, and I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you, Director Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I think Director Simons got in there first. Is there any discussion? And let me start with the discussion here, since I'm the one who pulled it. We need a new, we need a new software system. Fee-pay has shown, obviously, that it wasn't up to par this last year on some of the times. There was some hiccups, and it's going out, and it's going to be obsolete. So we do need to do something. This particular program, I really don't have thoughts one way or another on the efficacy of it. What I do have concerns is the total cost and bearing some of these fees within, there's two things. We're buying software, and we're buying transaction services from a bank so that we can do our online fee-pay type of system. People use a credit card, use a debit card, and in fact, they use it almost 70,000 times last year. So we need something that's robust, and we need something that is cost-effective. Looking at the numbers, I've implemented these before for my former company. I've done online banking systems before to accept credit cards and debit cards. And what I see is, I believe, and it had been noted, transaction fees are paying for some of the software. And based upon my knowledge of market, we're probably paying another, out of that 140 grand of merchant fees, that's probably 45 grand over market cost. So what we're paying, about 45,000 a year plus six grand, or over 50,000 for the software, and we should be paying, you know, under 100 grand for the merchant fees. My comment and question is, we have an issue here where we've bundled it together. And usually when you bundle things, you can hide things. They have said that the transaction fees are paying for their software. I'm not sure that's the best practice, that we should do that. We should have a software cost and a transaction fee cost. I know companies try to bundle them together so that they can do, you know, make things look more expensive or less expensive over here, depending upon the thing. So those are my comments on this, and coming from the industry, knowing some of this, and having the understanding, we should be paying probably a point and a half for debit and probably three and a quarter for credit card transactions. And with the majority being debit these days, we should have a blended rate of about 2%, not 3%. So again, that's about $10,000 per million, and we're doing 4.5 million, so that's 45 grand in costs that are probably going to the software. And it would just be easier for me to accept that if that was upfront and put into a contract that we're going to pay 50 grand a year for the software versus whatever. Because if we use them, this is an open-ended contract, if we use them for five years, that's a quarter million dollars, and that's a substantial sum for a piece of software. So those are my comments. Anybody else? If anyone wants to address those, I really didn't have a question, it was more of a comment, or any board members want to ask anything about that?
Chair Ostaffi, super, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Tanya, sorry.
Yeah, this is Director Simons. So I just, you know, I am not an expert in the industry, and I just wanted to understand a little bit more about this. For my knowledge, is this a standard contract of how school districts conduct business with the software companies in this way?
So this is Ron Meyer. Thank you, Director Simons. I will, I will say that we had a comprehensive analysis of many companies that we were looking to see who could meet the needs from collecting fees, whether it be activity fees, parking lot fees, or food service, nutrition service, lunch fees, and even to doing drama fees and things like that. And so our tech team under Anthony's leadership went through an exhaustive search, and that's how we landed on Affinity Solutions. I will say in terms of the other competitors that we analyzed, and I think there's about six of them total, we reached out to get pricing on all of them and the price structure, and all of them are priced in a similar way, where they bundle together under the merchant fees, and they vary a little bit in terms of the percentage of transaction and how much per transaction it is. But just like as you see in the memo from Anthony, Ty's or Sourcewell, who we've been with for a number of years for this service, charged about 4% for each transaction or for the transactions. And so there is a savings with going with Affinity, and we believe that it actually meets more of our needs, and it will be a better, more user-friendly component or software for our families to engage with to be able to do their fees. So again, as we looked at those other competitors, not So again, as we looked at those other competitors, not just Sourcewell and Ties, which that system is going away, but those other competitors that we looked at had a similar structure. The percentage was a little bit different. Affinity was actually the lowest, one of the lowest, if not the lowest of all of the competitors that we looked at in terms of the percentage at that 2.98%. And Anthony, I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to add in terms of the, how it meets the district?
Yeah, so one of the things where we paid a lot of consideration towards as we were looking for a solution, if you know, Fee Pay addressed not only collecting fees but also registration for athletics, collecting forms for physicals. It collected our free and reduced price lunch applications and processed those and as well as, you know, charging the variety of fees that we do and allowing families to load lunch accounts, so pre-loading balances that are then debited from over time. You know, one of the challenges in the education space is there are not a lot of solutions out there that universally meet all of those needs. So many districts are using two to three different solutions for all of these things, which requires a parent or a family member to log into one application to pay for fees, another application to pay and register for athletics and potentially another one to, you know, do food services and load balances in. So we were really thinking about what is that end user experience for families? In terms of the merchant fee and the bundling, that is a common practice in the education space. Every one of the, the products that we reviewed, which are, are used nationally, all use a bundled pricing structure. And part of the rationale for that is trying to figure out a software structure that would meet the needs and scalability from a small district to a large district. So where you often will see X number of users costs this much and then you go to the next tier and then the next tier, the way that these financial transactions are working within the education space are, are bundling that within the percentage of the fee. So it's, it's proportional based on the school district and the amount that the product is actually used. Is there rationale for going with a bundled service and providing a more, a stronger ability for districts to do planning from a budgetary perspective? Because, you know, as, as Mike said, you know, when you start looking and parsing out, there's, there's a different transaction fee for premium credit cards versus standard credit cards versus debit cards and not knowing always what exactly, you know, a family might choose to use for their purchases depending on how your, your community changes or, or looks over time. That can vary and become not as predictable as having one constant merchant fee that the software is bundled in with.
And one more thing that I would add is, is that we did, we actually did ask the vendor as part of our due diligence on whether or not we, we could bring in our own merchant service provider and they will not actually let us. So in order to go with this particular vendor, we do have to use the bundled service and their merchant service partner that they use.
And, and to be clear, I, I had no issues with the potential performance of this vendor nor did I have an issue with the total cost. My big concern is that it was bundled pricing and it, it seemed to take a lot to get some of that information. Because again, as you said, some things are buried in there and that's not transparent. And when I'm doing a contract, I would like to see transparency of where the costs are and, and, you know, what the profitability is of this for the vendor. So that was my main issue with that. You know, you, you brought up an issue of, of this being standard practice. Well, I, I would hope that we start challenging those standard practices so that things can be more transparent and, and our residents do have a better look at what exactly that we're paying. But again, I am not challenging the performance or the total cost. Again, savings are a bonus because we had to replace it anyway. So I'm, I'm glad we're doing it at a lower cost. And if this meets the performance criteria set forth, that's great. The one issue that I still do have is that I don't see an agreement with a processor, but I do see that we have to use theirs and they can change it at any time without our approval. So that whole bundling piece, again, lack of transparency and bundling, still gives me cause for concern.
Cheryl Stoffey, may I make some comments? I share some of the concerns that you have brought up. My knowledge of e-commerce is not incredibly extensive, but I do have some knowledge. And I share the same concerns, that those things should be really separate. And most e-commerce contracts outside of education are separate, to my knowledge. And that, that is definitely something I'm concerned about because I would be concerned if this company or any other company we were to go with were to decide that they wanted to change their processing fees or vendors at any time. I'm also wondering about two other pieces. One is how well does this program fit into the existing programs that we already use, such as ParentView and Schoology, which are supposed to be sources for parents to access this information, but they're really not efficient with the software system that we have in place right now that we're going to phase out. So, you know, when I log into Schoology as a parent or, and I'm checking my child's courses and I want to register for something that's an extracurricular, will I be able to do that through this new affinity programming right in Schoology? Or am I going to have to still go to another website? Am I going to have to go to ParentView if I want to go pay my kid's lunch balance? And another area, if I want to sign them up for an extracurricular activity?
Yep, so, you know, what I can say is similar to what we have now is there's three softwares that parents would engage with for very different reasons. So Schoology, and you wouldn't see this in any school district integrating in with a fee or a registration solution because Schoology is a curriculum content delivery system, which is what teachers use to deliver instruction and that's the primary purpose of that.
Yes, that's true, but can I just stop you there for just a quick second? Because there are courses that you can register for that are actually fee-based programs that Schoology is being utilized for.
Correct. They're utilizing Schoology to deliver the content, but it's not a registration platform. So there would be separation there. There is integration from our student information system into this solution, which we need to have with any solution in order to pass back the parent data and the student data to identify individuals in the system as well as identifying, pass back and forth free and reduced price lunch data. So when a family fills out an application and they qualify in the student information system, they get properly identified and then that also impacts because it goes back to the affinity solution to provide those reduced rates for where that, where that exists within activities and within the lunch service program. You can't go directly out of StudentView into Affinity just like you can't go out of Student or ParentView right now into Fee Pay. You still have to go out of that solution. That is, we're looking at how to streamline that process moving forward, but that's not something that would occur right off the bat. And we've got other ways that we're going to look at technical integrations to streamline and make it easier for families to engage with different tools without having to have multiple usernames and passwords as currently exists. So that is on a project roadmap, but is separate from this particular solution replacement.
Okay, so my final question is, I don't know, come long, I guess? I don't know. What is the benefit besides the fact that it's a package and we can just hire them and roll it out of having an outside source do this work for us versus having our own credit management system where we're able to take fees and integrate it with the programs that we're already using and cater it to our specific needs?
Yep, so two things is, one is staffing capacity and skill sets. So we don't have in-house web developers that could actually develop a user interface. So that's one of the pieces. The other piece that goes along with this, as soon as we started doing that, we take on the liability and the PCI compliance. So just like with Fee Pay right now and Affinity Solution, those solutions and vendors are required and responsible for the PCI compliance and the liability that are associated with that. And it's not on the district to be, to manage that piece. So if we went that route, first, we'd have to hire contractors to come and build the tool because the tool doesn't exist. We'd have to hire a team that would be able to maintain, manage and oversee the PCI compliance and the integrity with that compliance as well, as well as have a team in order to maintain that system over time. So as Synergy would do an update, we would have to actually develop, you know, the program that would continue that integration with that as well on the software side.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Anthony.
Can I just add one last piece for the board to consider? As this came to me from my evaluation and recommendation here, you know, I had three things that stuck out to me. My confidence in, in our tech team and our financial team to really manage the selection process well and I think that was done. The overall costs come in less than what our previous solution was. And then the last one was touched on, but it's that user, user friendly piece and end user, you know, element. There was a lot of frustration this year. And so I was highly interested in a, in a way to do this that wouldn't have multiple interfaces and really, if possible, streamline that experience for our families and students. So those were the three things that kind of stuck out for me in support of the recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. Board members, any final questions before we go to a vote?
Cheryl Stoffey, this is Director Muscata Jones, I can't even say my own name, thank you very much. I just want to commend Anthony on this process. Having been in education for 30 years and knowing the frustration of things that are available to the business community that don't fit with our educational systems and how that all fits together, it's, I can't even imagine how frustrating it is for those of you in the business community to come here and go, for the love of Pete, why can't it be like this? It, it just, education systems are a different animal than most businesses think of. So I commend you on finding a user friendly thing for our families because Lord knows, I have to have a PhD sometimes to figure some of those things out.
Thank you, Director Muscata Jones. And I also want to thank Anthony and Ron for answering all my questions over this long weekend. So I, I want to thank them for going above and beyond and doing that, so. No other final comments or questions? Let's take it to the vote, Sheri. This is a vote to approve the contract with Affinity Solutions, item I.
Director Dawson Walton?
We didn't hear you.
Aye.
There we go.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Muscata Jones?
Aye.
Director Ostaffy?
Nay.
Six to zero.
Five to one, I said nay.
Oh, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
All right. Just wanted to get that correct. So, motion passes. Looking forward to having a good integration. Next item is our action items. We have several recommendations for approval on terms and conditions of employment. Laurel Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources, will provide information on each one. First is a recommendation for approval agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District 279, School Board and Management Personnel I through M, July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. Laurel, it is all yours.
Good evening, Cheryl Stoffey, School Board Members and Superintendent McIntyre. I have bundled all of my talking points into one set of talking points for all four of our contracts tonight. So on the agenda this evening for School Board Action, our recommendations for approval for three employee contract groups, Management I through M, Licensed Coordinators and School Executives, and one individual employment contract, the District General Council. The contracts you'll be considering this evening represent administrative positions in the school district that provide support and services to support student learning throughout the organization. The agreements with Management I through M, Licensed Coordinators and School Executives expired on June 30th, 2019. And the new agreement with the District General Council will expire on June 30th, 2020. The new agreements contain language changes that reflect current district practices as well as additional provisions that serve to support our district mission and strategic priorities. School Board Members have had the opportunity to review the proposed changes to the provisions contained in the terms and conditions, to ask questions and to consider financial implications. It is the Superintendent's and my recommendation that you improve the employee contracts presented to you this evening.
Thank you, Laurel. So we can go through each of them one by one. First, are there any questions for Ms. Anderson? Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and, oops, I'm in the wrong spot, and Management Personnel I through M, effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021?
So moved, Director Jackie Muscata Jones?
Thank you, Director Muscata Jones. Is there a second?
Second, Director Simons.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? And Sheri, please call a roll call vote.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Ostaffy?
Aye.
Director Muscata Jones?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Six to zero, motion passes.
All right, thank you. Next one. Is there a motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and Licensed Coordinators, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2021?
So moved, Director Simons.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second, Jackie Muscata Jones.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Sheri, please call a roll call vote.
Director Ostaffy?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Muscata Jones?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Sheri. Is there a motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and School Executives, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2021? Is there a motion?
So moved, Jackie Muscata Jones.
Thank you, Director Muscata Jones. Is there a second?
Second, Director Simons.
Thank you, Director Simons. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Sheri, can you please take a roll call vote?
Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Ostaffy?
Aye.
Director Muscata Jones?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Sheri. Next up, is there a motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and Tim Palmetier, District General Counsel, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2021?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second, Director Simons.
Thank you. Any question? Hearing none. Sheri, we, please take a roll call vote.
Director Muscata Jones?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Ostaffy?
Aye.
Passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next item, the final action item, is the approval of gifts to the district totaling an incredible $136,000, $136,363. an incredible $136,363.33 from a broad range of benefactors, boosters and PTOs across the district. So is there a motion to approve gifts to the district in the amount of $136,363.33?
So moved, Director Douglas?
Is there a second?
Second, Director Simons.
And the only discussion is, thank you. Someone else can do the same. But Sherry, if you could take a roll call vote, please.
Director Ostafi?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Moscata-Jones?
Aye.
Director Dawson-Walton?
Aye.
Passes six to zero.
Thank you to everyone who has helped with the improved education of our children, thank you. Our final, I'm sorry, not our final, but the next agenda is informational items. Are the first reading of the following policies, 312, 417, 436 and 443. Mr. Palmetier, it's up to you.
Thank you, Chair Stoffey, School Board members and Superintendent McIntyre. There are four policies on the agenda for first reading tonight. The first three policies are being recommended for repeal. Policy 312, Assignment and Transfer Principles. Policy 417, Employee Chemical Use/Abuse. And Policy 436, Addresses of Personnel. I'll note the following with respect to these policies. With respect to Policy 312, Concerning Assignment and Transfers of Principles, this policy is over 20 years old and its original purpose is truly unclear. While Policy 312 includes some consideration that the district would want to take into account in principal assignments, the policy is neither necessary nor exhaustive in listing the factors that the school would take into account in principal assignments. Furthermore, during the last round of negotiations with OCEO's Principals Association, OPA, there was consensus on limited, unlimited utility of Policy 312 and a shared interest in outlining applicable assignment and transfer processes in a memorandum of understanding between OPA and the district. We are currently working, I am currently working with, with the representative of OPA on such an MOU. Next is repeal of Policy 417, Employee Chemical Use and Abuse. This policy is 20 years old and has limited or no utility. It provides the district no additional authority over the workforce and it provides no specific protections for employees that do not already exist under state or federal law or for that matter, school district policies. And finally is Policy 436, Addresses of Personnel. This policy again is over 20 years old and the reasons for its original adoption again is unclear. While employees are required to provide their addresses and phone numbers to Human Resources when they begin their employment, the School Board policy is not necessary to continue this practice. And finally, Policy 443 has been proposed for revision. This policy was last revised in July of 2015. The policy was recently reviewed after an inquiry was made about whether it's permissible for teachers to provide private tutoring at school for a fee. The current version of the policy, of Policy 443, did not specifically address this question and did not provide other parameters around private tutoring by teachers. The proposed revisions are intended to prevent potential conflicts of interest by teachers when tutoring students and to prevent improper use of school district facilities and resources for private benefit in the course of providing those tutoring services. I do want to note for clarification purposes, the version of the policy that was before the policy committee is slightly different than the policy that is on the agenda for first read tonight. I noticed that just preliminary to the board meeting. Section 4B, which is attached to tonight's agenda, actually should read, "A teacher may not accept a tutoring fee, a fee, for students who are assigned to them during the current school year," and this is the additional language, "without administrative approval." The idea here again being that we want to make sure that teachers who are in a situation where providing private tutoring in any situation are not using their position as a, as a teacher for tutoring services for a private benefit, that could be a potential conflict of interest. First reading begins a four-week period for reaction to the proposed policies by concerned groups or individuals. After the four-week period, the School Board may repeal or adopt provisions to any or all of these policies after their second reading. The proposed revisions to these policies are available on the school district website and with the agenda for this meeting for tonight. Comments on the policies discussed here tonight may be directed to the School Board or myself. Comments on the, comments on the policies may also be directed online through the School Board Policies and Procedures webpage located on the district website.
Thank you, Tim. And it's interesting, a policy whose reasoning was truly unknown must, or truly unclear must have only been written by a lawyer, so.
Well, there might have been some reason, but I couldn't really do the legislative history, but you're probably correct in that regard.
All right, thank you very much. Board members, any questions for Mr. Palmetier? Thank you. Final agenda item is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn at 8:00 PM on the news?
So moved, Director Simons.
Do we have a second?
Question, Director Douglas?
We have a motion and a second, Sherry, please take a roll call vote.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Moscata-Jones?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Dawson-Walton?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Ostafi?
Aye.
Passes six to zero.
And with that, we are adjourned. Have a good, have a good evening, everybody, and we'll talk to you soon, thank you.